I will call the regular city council meeting of July 11th, 2024 to order at 7:00 P. M. Where's my thing? Please rise and join in reciting the pledge.
The pledge is to witness the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we will call the roll call. Mrs. Conley.
Here. Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Marvel.
Here.
Mr. Maxson.
Here.
Powell, here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
And Ms. Saiso.
I would like to introduce to the public, Mr. Michael Maxson. He is our new board member that's taken over Ashley's, not Ashley's.
Angela.
Angela, thank you. Angela's position. She had to move out of the area, so. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, now it's time for public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a public comment? Great.
Hi guys.
Hello. Hello. Good, how are you?
You guys said you'd like to see me, but we'll see how that goes. Just kidding. Um, my name's Jacob Puckett. My address is 174 Pine. And I have questions and concerns. So I know I voiced to a couple of you last week about traffic issues in the city. So not only did mine street borderline traffic driving. Um, I mean, five over is one thing. Doing almost 55 to 45 into 25 is very concerning. It's playing my front, front of my house. I know probably about a month ago, somebody had drove into somebody's house on 17 Mile. And that's what I'm worried about. My kid's getting hit or somebody else's kid's getting hit. So I'd been thinking on ways that we could mitigate speed, not only on my street, but also in the streets of Cedar Springs. Because eventually somebody's going to get hit. Um, and was wondering if it would be possible if we put a stop sign on Pine right at the corner of.
Is it Smith's?
Right there. Um, because obviously sheriffs can't be there always. You know what I mean? It's just an impossible task sometimes. And I understand that. So trying to figure out different ways to mitigate that. Um, I know also I talked to another council member and on her street as well, she was concerned as well. So I don't know, maybe we could hopefully try to figure a way to again mitigate that. But yeah, that's it for me today. So thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anybody online?
Okay. There are no additional public comment. We will move on to the adoption of, of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections needing, needed on the agenda?
Yes.
We could add six E.
Our library.
Amendments. Okay, can I get a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Addition six E. Any second?
All right.
Um, we don't need a roll call one for that, do we? Yeah, we do. Motion and support.
Motion to add it if we haven't adopted the agenda yet?
Adopting the agenda with the addition.
We haven't adopted the agenda yet.
Yeah, right.
Do we need a motion?
We're not sure whether or not this is how most of us would adopt the agenda as amended.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Any other discussion? Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Maxson.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
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 Mrs. Ray.
Yes. And it's Atchison votes yes. Okay. Um, didn't we just say, we added that to the consent agenda? That's fine. Okay. Yeah. Okay. That's good. Are there any, we don't have any other things that we want to talk about on the consent agenda, do we? Okay.
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I will second that.
All right. Mrs. Powell.
Yep.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Maxson.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to action item seven A. Motion to approve resolution 2024-18, a resolution to proclaim July 24th, 2024 as Rose Powell Day.
I would like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
All right. Um, we have a discussion. Do you want to read the resolution or? Uh, is 2024-18 is a resolution to proclaim July 24th, 2024 as Rose Powell Day. Whereas Rose Powell has demonstrated an exceptional commitment to public service and community development through her extensive involvement in various local organizations and initiatives. And whereas she has served as a city council member where her leadership and dedication have significantly contributed to the betterment of our community. And whereas she has been an integral member of the planning commission, helping to shape and guide the growth and development of our city with her insightful and thoughtful contributions. And as whereas she has actively participated in the Downtown Development Authority, playing a key role in the revitalization and enhancement of our downtown area, ensuring its prosperity for future generations. And whereas she has been a devoted member of the Women's Club, where she has worked tirelessly to empower women and promote their active involvement in civic and community life. And whereas she has been a dedicated member of the Garden Club, sharing her love for nature and beautifying our community through numerous gardening, gardening projects and initiatives. And whereas she has significantly contributed to the success of the Red Flannel Festival, its cherished community tradition through enthusiastic support and active participation. And whereas Rose Powell has made countless other contributions to our community, always exemplifying the spirit of service, dedication and selfishness. Now, selflessness, I'm sorry.
That's all.
Now, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Cedar Springs hereby recognizes and honors Rose Powell for her lifetime of service and extraordinary contributions to our community. And be it further resolved that July 24th, 2024 is hereby declared as Rose Powell Day in recognition of her outstanding achievements and unwavering dedication to the betterment of our community. Be it further resolved that on this day, we encourage all citizens to join in celebrating, expressing their gratitude to Rose Powell for her remarkable service and lasting impact on our community.
Why don't we go out there, Mr. Powell?
Ann.
I'm a crier. Yeah, well then I'll be crying out at issue. I would love to give you this back conversation. And for, for all your years of service to our community and everything you've done for us and everything you put into our system.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, I got it. Yes, speech, speech, speech.
For you.
Um, you're practicing for the 24th, you know?
Yeah. One of the reasons I do all these things is because I'm retired. That's helpful. You have time. And the people of Cedar Springs, I enjoy this community. What a pleasure it's been to get to know so many people and so many different activities. I lost my darn speech. Uh, I got it out. Anyways, uh, I had a few things I wanted to.
They could be back in your person.
I might have. Oh, there it is. Okay. Uh, I'd like to thank Ron Mer, Ron Merling. Um, a fabulous government teacher. A man who led this community in so many ways. And, um, the, the first people that I was on this board with, uh, Dan Clark, Bob Truesdale, Molly Towns, Nixon, or Nixon, Pam, of course, Conley, Gerald Hall, our beloved Gerald Hall, Jerry Gross, Lisa, Renee, Ashley, I miss her a lot. And of course, Mr. Marvel. And our staff, Rebecca Darla, Emily, Bill and Tanya, Sergeant Probst and Sergeant Kelly. He was our first Kent County Sheriff. And what a wonderful decision it was to move to Kent County for our police department. Marty Frazier, what a man to, to have donated as many years as he did to our fire departments. And Donna Clark, Mike Womack, who, who, um, brought us back into the DDA and has helped us create a lot of the things in Cedar Springs. The other thing is the Kent Theater Association. What a miracle that that happened. It was, went from a trashed out old, dumpy old building and now to a theater. And especially Len Allington, it was his dream. The museum, we have a fabulous museum and all the folks that run that. Volunteers, every one of these folks are so big hearted toward our community. We just, they just amazing. A garden club, wonderful bunch of people that is just another group of people that astonish me. And they don't live here in Cedar Springs, but their heart is here in Cedar Springs. Yeah, a couple of us, you and I. Um, the community building development team. When, before I got on council, the north end of our city was just basically kind of a trash dump. And I never in my wildest dreams that we would have gotten what we have today. The amphitheater, the library, the trails. It, it, it's just a dream come true. And I often sit there and I think, it's like being in the Wizard of Oz. You're like in a whole different land in just 10 years. Um, especially Dwayne McIntyre, who's worked his guts out for that. And of course, we know. And, and Dwayne is still doing it. So thank you to him. Red Flannel Festival, dear to our hearts. And again, these are people that may not live in Cedar Springs, but their whole life has been somehow in connection of our city and our festival, Red Flannel Festival, the only one in the world, by the way. And I will protect and defend it to my death. And I guess that's about all except for, thank you, everybody. This is a great honor. And also I hope we do this to more of our fine citizens because we have a great community here and a lot of wonderful citizens. And one more thing, uh, September 26th is also Chris Powell Day. So who knew? He was, uh, got a Chris Powell Day from John Toosink when he retired from the fire department. So, you know, let's keep this up and show others how much we appreciate their work and, and commitment to the city. Cause it, this is a fantastic place to live. Thank you.
I just wanted to. So what we have lined up so far, so far on July 24th, 10:00 a.m. We'll gather at the museum. Um, they're going to provide coffee and cookies. So if you know Rose through the museum, show up at the museum and, and thank her and all that good stuff. Um, noon, we'll have lunch at the Red Bird Bistro. Uh, two o'clock in the afternoon, we'll stop by the brewery. Uh, five o'clock, uh, will be next door at the American Legion Car Show. And then seven o'clock in the evening, uh, at the concert at the amphitheater.
Okay, do I get a nap anywhere in there? Okay, all right. Thank you. That's going to be a great fun day.
What time did you stay at the museum?
10:00.
Members of the public, anybody, um, come join us, even if, even if you, um, haven't really met Rose, you, it'd be a treat. I mean, show up at these places. These are great places to visit. And, um, thank you again. For all your years of service. We love you.
Just a wonderful pleasure. It really is.
Woman. So it's been great serving with you.
Wonderful people I've served with in the last 10 years, but I'm not going anyplace if somebody all of a sudden has to move or something. I can step in for a while. Not plaque back because we're going to do it again on the 24th. So on the 24th, they're going to bring it with you. Yeah, don't mount it yet. Well, you could mount it and take it down like that, you know? Really is. I have to get Chris's out too, both side by side.
I think that's a great idea.
Moving on to discussion item eight A.
Oh, Rebecca.
And we never wrote.
Never voted, sorry. Well, we better vote on that. Um, Mrs. Powell, can you vote on it?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mr. Maxson.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
And Ms. Atchison votes yes.
Thank you.
Yay. Now we will move on to discussion items eight A, names for the 17 North Main Pocket Park. Ms. Falcon. I keep moving my table. Um, so we, we put in your packet tonight, a list of names that was collected through, um, other polls. So we talked about this last month, thought we would bring it back. What do you guys think of, if, if you have a favorite? Each one of you would get a vote and then add the DDA's recommendation. And then that we can put out to the citizens for a poll of those names.
So we'd end up with two? No, one. One, okay.
Does that list all of the DDAs?
Uh, well, it was not from the DDA. It's from citizens and the DDA Facebook page had a poll.
I see.
Okay. You had different thoughts at the last meeting.
I, I like the idea of, of giving the residents the ultimate say in it. I, I think that's a, a great idea.
Do we have any, um, so you wanted us to kind of choose some of these names? Submit a name or whatever you feel it should be called. There could be duplicates.
Do you want us to send you an email?
Yes.
Okay. Did, okay, um, I'm going to poll you guys. Jerry, you were talking about other members of the community that.
If we're going to name it after a community member and somebody who has contributed to the community.
Did you have somebody in mind?
I, I gave you the list of three that popped right off my head at that time.
And are they on here?
No, they are not.
Okay, can you give those back again?
Or, I'm saying, we're going to use them.
Right.
On this list we have right here.
Yep.
I personally like Heritage Park. That includes everybody that has contributed to this community. As part of the heritage of this community, its growth and its continued growth.
Okay, so that's like a full community thing.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Max, Maxson, do you have any?
Um, yeah, I, I, I do, I did attend the last meeting and I was part of that. And that's kind of what struck me is, and, and the names that, uh, uh, Mr. Gross mentioned and Rose just reiterated in her, in her speech. Um, there are so many people that have, um, contributed to, uh, the community and the city. Um, and I, I wondered how you would narrow that down to the limited resources that we have. We can name, name a park here.
Right, right.
You know? Um, so if we could find a way that, um, uh, that would kind of a, a name, a more descriptive name, maybe that would embrace the community. Um, and who knows, maybe if we want to recognize individuals, we can find a way to do that. I don't know how we finance it, but signs and plaques, which maybe could give a paragraph or a, a list of the contributions. So people know who they are and what they have contributed. Um, we've got Morley Park. Does anybody know who Morley was? No, you do. I don't. You know, um, but, but, uh, the.
But we.
Sure, sure, absolutely. Um, um, but yeah, that, so, um, yeah, I, I, and like, and as I said, I like the idea of, uh, having the residents have, have a hand in, in saying that. Um, I would concur with, uh, Mr. Gross that, um, Heritage Park would be a good way to, um, recognize in a, in a, in a way, uh, everybody that came before and, um, the, the volunteers and the people that will contribute in the future.
If I can, if I can embellish upon that building, what I said, that brings in everybody. I could see a plaque, placard or listing down there with individuals' names who have distinguished themselves on that.
That would be, that would be a nice idea. Think that could happen?
The citizens could, uh, bring up people. Of course, you got to figure out how they contributed to the community, so on and so forth. Could be former Skinner's, Skinner's Drugsore was a, a stronghold back when I was, they were active in the community. So it's just things like that. If anybody came up with it, put on there with a boat of some sort somewhere along the line. It's just, that could be built upon it and that would go into with the Heritage Park. So.
I would agree. I think, I think that it's, it's good to remember those that, you know, did, lots of good for our community. And there's a lot of them that have. So I'm totally in favor of having a plaque or something, some kind of name that, uh, generalizes all of them, if that's a way of putting it. So I don't have a name that sticks out to me on this list, but yeah, that's just, I'm open.
Mrs. Ray.
Well, that name was number two on my list. Number one, I wasn't sure of. So kind of makes sense to me. Um, I like the idea of the Heritage Park. It just brings the community into what was past and now present. There, I've been here for 18 years and I would not know pretty much any of the people that you talk about. So, but that still doesn't change anything. I just want to recognize that they, we have a lot of new people as well. So we're trying to, we want to just kind of try to combine that in a way. And I just think that's a really nice name.
Mrs. Conley.
Um, I think Heritage Park can work. Um, two city managers go. We became, we signed an MOU with the Federal Parks Association for the North, for the North Country Trail. And one of the things that we talked about becoming a trail town was to have historical markers. And by the way, I've seen some through hikers, which is sort of interesting. I don't know if you've seen the people with the, like, great big packs and they're, you know, so I'm like, oh, we have through hikers now. So that's kind of cool. Um, that we were supposed to come up with specific historic locations that we would put signs on. And they included things like Grayson Nina's graves and putting a sign there talking about the foundation of the red flannel. Cause they're buried next to each other in the cemetery. Um, talking about things like, we got a sign for the spring. Um, but.
We did the Rotary Guild.
That, well, and I can't, actually there was like a specific man and I don't remember his name.
Yeah, Clark.
Yes. Who came with the sign and it was like a thing. Um, cause he put it in and there was a certain person that got angry about it. But anyway, that's another story. And Jerry and I were going to go dig a hole and put some concrete in. But, um, I think maybe we should, Heritage Park is great, but then maybe we should have some. And, and the reason that we didn't follow through on that was literally the cost of the signs. My husband was like, do you know how much the signs cost? He like called me in his office and he had this whole thing of like, and I'm like, okay. I, but I mean, this is what the National Park Service said. And I guess if you've ever been to a national park, they put a lot of those things up. And I would advocate, we should, like, there should be a thing outside Skinner Field that says, these who the Skinner's were. There should be a thing in Morley Park that says, this is who the Morley family were. This is who Riegel family were. And then we could add in some of these things like the, you know, we were the location of the first minor store.
Second.
Actually, no, we were the first.
The originals in Greenville.
Not my understanding, but okay. Cause he supposedly had a cart that he had down on Main Street. So I was told by a.
Would have done that too. Sure.
And before they built these store in Greenville. But anyway, those would be, I mean, I think Heritage Park is fine, but rather than putting a list of names underneath of it, I think it would be lovely to put
signs where they.
Signs and like, with like a little paragraph about, because like you're saying, well, who knows who the Morleys are? Well, I mean, I do because I've given a hundred speeches about the history of this place and I've looked them up. But like, it would be nice if I didn't have to call 10 people and, you know, to, to try to get that. I mean, the Model A. There should be a thing with that, right? And our first fire chief and I don't know. That would be my, that would be my take on it. So call it, I mean, call it Heritage Park. I think that's great. But I wouldn't want to just put a list of names of people underneath of it. I would want to like, I would want to spend the money on the signs and put them in the places.
Listen, one a year, two a year, you know, start somewhere. Okay.
There is one, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's not, it doesn't live anymore, but the National Park Association or the national, the, whatever the national parks. When we signed the MOU to commit to the North Country Trail, Jerry Hall signed it. I gave a speech up at the school. And the guy from the parks is actually still on my Facebook, Luke. I can find him. He's, he was the fourth person to through hike the North Country Trail. And he came here to do the, I feel like some of, some of you were here.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, I know it's been a minute, but I'm not that old.
Why don't we put that, that's kind of a different kind of, but kind of leans into this subject, but that's kind of a different thing. So why don't we put that on an agenda to discuss? Can we do that?
I'm just saying, I would support Heritage Park, but I wouldn't support Heritage Park with a list of people's names. Like I would like to see, like, just listing people's names, doesn't.
No, I don't think that's what he was saying.
He was saying have a, have. He was saying have a, have information on, on what they did and certain things. So it's kind of, yeah, it's kind of about the same thing, but it's a little different, yeah. Ms. Powell, what did, what do you think?
I like the idea of it being called the Cedar Springs Community Park because it is the community. And we do have Legacy Park, so, um, that's already kind of, uh, uh, way to say it, heritage. But this is a downtown Cedar Springs Park. And it's a community park and however that could come out. And also as a DDA, we initially started the idea of building a little park there. And, um, I kind of thought maybe DDA Park should go in on it because we had the first discussions at DDA about turning that little spot into a park. So it could be the downtown, the Cedar Springs DDA Park and the history in that, because, um, it's, it's a community park and it belongs to the people and it was initially started with the DDA. So I would say, uh, Cedar Springs Community Park or Downtown Community Park if we could do it. Lot of words.
Yeah, I do like community better than heritage.
Yeah, community. Hopefully we'll have a lot of community activities there.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm for, um, getting recognizing a lot of the people in the community that have done a lot of things. Um, the hard time, hard, hard point is where do we put, you know, where do we put it? Um, I don't, you know, like, there's a lot of, there would be space on the bathroom or whatever there. But I think we could start doing that and then, and then lean into the other, um, as a different project. Um, so I like either Cedar Springs Community Park or Heritage Park. I think you can do it with either.
Those two names, do you want the recommendation by DDA? So three names to go out to the community?
Yeah, is that enough? I mean-
I actually don't want too many.
Right.
Or it becomes hard.
You're doing too many, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Lisa?
I mean, maybe make up-
Uh, yeah. There a way now, you put one of those codes on and you take a picture and then it has all the-
QR code.
QR codes, yeah, that has all the information that you might want to have in that description of that park. You don't have to have twenty names, you just-
Yeah, well, because I think, um, kind of putting the information that we want to recognize a lot of people from the community, um, other than, you know, a lot of people instead of just one person, kind of make, um, near to maybe, um, that that's what, what we're leaning toward. That's why we're, you know, um, not just like leaning away from Jerry, you know. So, um, and he, I mean, and we don't have to say that he has something else named after him, but I mean, just give a little description of why maybe, why we're leaning that way. There, it's up to you.
Would that be swaying votes though?
Doubt it. I just wanted to explain because I think we're gonna get, we had a lot of votes for Jerry Hall, you know. So I wouldn't want to sway the votes, no, but what do you think, Jerry?
The only problem with doing it strictly for Jerry, again, I appreciate everything he did. Both he and Amy and Amy's first husband. Unfortunately, he passed away too soon, but, uh, the people that are going to vote, I can tell you, will not recognize the other names that I recognized as the same as what you did, uh, because you weren't here. So it's easy to go for Jerry Hall. Uh, and I wouldn't be totally opposed either, but I think there's other people in the past that should be recognized if you're going to start recognizing somebody for each and every project. So, uh, I, I don't think you can use a name one that is relative unless it's something that there's a lot of people can relate to. You would have to give a full history of what they did. And then you're getting not just a popularity poll, it's a recognition in what has been earned, so. That's a long answer for, I don't think we should just use a single person's name for something. Other than a project such as we did with Jerry for the water treatment plant. He was very instrumental in that and he was recognized because he was instrumental in that, so.
That's where those QR codes come in pretty nice. The community would cover us all. Everybody. It's our community.
Because we're all part of the heritage, no? Some of us closer to being heritage than others.
Do with it what you may, I mean, what you think is-
We can do up a little paragraph. We're trying to name this park, you know, we got grant money to put this park there and, yeah.
These are the three options.
Yep. Let us know your vote. We'll bring that back to the next council meeting.
All right. Anything else? Anybody wants to say? Okay. Um, hearing no additional discussion, we will now move on to communications. Uh, have anything read to us or?
July twenty-fourth, um, NKCE will be giving away, um, ice cream social at the concert.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a really good band too.
Yeah. And cruisers.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're a big draw.
The only other one I wanted to mention was the EDA closeout letter for the West Street Project. This started in, I think, twenty nineteen, so many, 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 many years. Um, several, um, so Jerry Fideo, the guy in Chicago that started the grant with us, retired halfway through, so that was a new, um, Engazi, I don't even remember her last name, Lopez, had to kind of go back to square one, catch up with Jerry, had approved, then finish the grant. The engineer at Row left. We had to get another engineer up to speed with everything. Um, I stepped away, Emily had to learn a lot, so a lot of people involved. It, it just, I'm so glad it's closed out, but now we just need to market the property and sell it and get some businesses down there, so. Glad that's done.
On it lately at all?
Um, not-
Lately.
Okay, moving on to department reports.
Great place. They just haven't found it yet.
Right.
Okay.
Um, I don't have too much. I was on vacation for a couple of weeks, um, definitely time away. Thank you to all the staff and employees that did their jobs very well while I was gone and, um, my phone didn't ring with emergencies and so, a, a great crew here. Um, just wanted to mention sidewalk sales on Friday. Come down Springs for sidewalk sales and then Saturday, there will be many, many people here for the Cedar Blitz Bike Race. Uh, Main Street will be closed from eight AM to four PM.
Who is on for Public Works? Tanya?
Yes, hello. Um, so we repaired the playground equipment down at Morley Park. Pulled some out and then replaced some broken pieces on there. Moved the owl, the library next to the girl. Somebody had requested we do that, so we did that. Power washed amphitheater and repainted the back doors, which unfortunately are scratched up again. And then we repainted the restroom at the staging area. Just mowing and keeping up on the other city stuff that we do daily. And that's it.
Um, yep, I hope to bring that to you in August. Um, a couple of members of staff and I are going to tour another township locally that has the same setup that we're looking at. So we want to see them in action, like what the whole setup is so we can, when we present it to you, we're more-
Endulism that is getting scratched in those doors, yeah. Okay, so hopefully we're gonna get something where we can figure out what's going on there.
That's our plan.
Enforcement, Mr. Probst, Sergeant Probst.
First off, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Puckett for coming in and addressing and bringing into our attention speeding on Pine Street in your fifth, you're right. I believe that you contacted me in the past, referenced speeding in that area. I know we did some selective enforcement through there. Um, it's a difficult area for us because our cruisers require to be facing traffic. It's a difficult area for us to run stationary radar in that area. We did have some four sixteen officers come through, uh, a couple of times after those complaints to us, uh, to do selective enforcement, but they're all over the county. They're hard to get into the city as much as we'd like. And I don't know if we can, if we've ever done or could do a speed study where they come in, they put the things in the road, uh, that can track the speed in the car count in that area. Might give the board a little better idea of the speed in the car count.
Asked for that?
I thought we had a couple of those.
No, we've done the signs that like tell people and then tell them to slow down, but not the like where you roll over them and they tell you how many cars went down your street and what speed they're going.
Um, I have that driveway on the corner of Fifth and Pine that goes through. So, I mean, if you need to use that, mm-hmm, if you need to use that occasionally, yeah.
Your driveway, your driveway's a little tough.
Your deputies before, like, you guys can sit in my driveway. I don't, I don't even care if I'm home, just-
It's not really pointing.
Driveway's a little tough because it has a sidewalk on that side.
Uh, I don't.
Your side.
Yeah.
Well, I thought, I thought you were on the north side.
So, yeah, no.
East.
The sidewalk.
Yeah, so I'm on the south side.
Those three newer development houses.
Okay, okay. Um, I don't know whether, speed count, how accurate it would be by Fifth Street. I don't know if they'll put it that close to an intersection because you got all the cars turning off of Fifth Street, manipulating the speed.
Coming from, you know, probably further down anyways, you know, so. If you like to peel out at the corner though.
I was just about to say, uh, and I sat out there personally and-
You can sit out there for an hour, two hours and not have anything. And then you could, I think if you're out there all the time, as soon as we leave, there goes somebody, so. Uh, we'll definitely do extra patrol in the area. We have another, uh, citizen that's come forward, referenced speeding in Muskegon and Mary Street by the high school. And we've sat out there for the last three weeks and, uh, really realized how bad the speeding is through that section as well. And I think that one of the officers last week had ten traffic stops in a couple of hours right there, so. Um, we encourage the citizens to come forward and, and reach out to us. Uh, my contact information's on our website or call the city and then give you my email and stuff for those type of requests. But I will look into seeing if we can get a county type of speed enforcement, not speed enforcement, a speed study done on Pine Street and car count. So maybe you guys have a better idea about his suggestion of a stop sign there.
Like, they come, like, coming from, um, seventeen, no, yeah. I remember, I'm dyslexic, White Creek. That coming like down the hill towards like CTA and it's, I don't know, what is it, forty-five?
Up on the twenty-five.
And then it comes down to twenty-five and you're going downhill as you're, and like people just, and it goes from being farm to being, hello, you're in town and-
Because the church has a great parking lot for us to sit in, but, and we also sit behind the gas station there, right at Main Street and Pine on the north side where the, the building was taken down. That's an area that we can sit and now the new parking lot on Pine Street, we can sit in there as well, but, so.
Like, like, they just keep flying. They just don't hit the brakes when it is twenty-five. I mean, that's my, I don't know.
And hope I can get something back to the board to give you an idea of, I don't know what it takes to get stop signs. I don't know if you guys-
You can, you can do a-
Getting all kinds of stuff to get stop signs, but-
Sidewalk construction and get a borrowed one and then maybe concrete it in.
Well, they put one on Fifth Street.
And we did.
That's what I'm talking about. You just kept it.
We just gotta make sure we're doing it legally so when we write those traffic tickets, we don't, we're not losing that in court that the signs take a proper way of putting those things in, so. Um, the other thing that we're working on is the gravel races this Saturday. Uh, we've got a ton of man-hours into this gravel race. Uh, we'll be closing Main Street for the first time this year, starting on Main Street and ending on Main Street. Um, this race will come back in on Muskegon, turn north on First Street, west on Beach by the American Legion and then back northbound on Main Street to the finish line right before Maple.
And how many people?
We talked today, I think they have five hundred and twenty registered to race, but he expects a lot of people wait till the last minute, so he's expecting close to six hundred riders this year. They were starting a little bit later. Um, just hoping that riders and family maybe stick around a little bit afterwards. I know the brewery's gonna have a cornhole tournament on Maple Street this year between brewery and the library. That will be closed, uh, before the race is over and, um, after the race, they'll have the cornhole tournament there as well, so. A lot of time and effort's been put into it by DPW, us and the race director and Darla and everybody else, so looking forward to that.
And the library's gonna close that day.
The library's, uh, we're leaving the library driveway open.
On the west side.
The hardest Cedar Springs side.
The, the community room, they told.
Oh.
They-
Did say at the library meeting.
Yeah.
They were gonna close for the day, yeah.
That's what they, yeah, this life.
This last meeting?
Yeah.
They have a van or something in there that they had to get into?
Yeah, the, yeah, that.
Yeah.
The people who rented it are, have like withdrawn their, they're not renting it anymore.
So we don't have to worry about that?
When we're doing that, we'll just open up parking for, uh, people to park in the library. They just can't come out the east side. We'll close it from the west side. They can still get into that parking lot and out of that parking lot on the west side, so.
Does the race start?
Race starts at ten. We'll be closing Main Street at eight. We have to work on getting vehicles off the roadway.
They should be coming back through.
So it takes off at ten. Some of the first and fastest riders will be coming back at eleven for the eighteen mile and possibly even the, last year, some of the speed racers did the thirty-six mile and hour and ten minutes they were finishing. Yeah, they're, no, I'm not, they're flying. Guys at the age levels of the riders that are coming through at really fast speeds. And it draws a big crowd of participants from all ages. I think one of the participants might have been in his eighties last year that came through, yeah, so, I think it's a great event.
My cousin rode, uh, was that, I think he got second place. He rode his bike up from Grand Rapids, did the race and then drove, rode back home and I'm like,
seriously?
I'm sure it's not my cousin.
At right now.
Okay, so.
Yeah, they are.
Now with the race on Saturday, they're running the race right now, practicing.
I saw, I did see them. Yeah, that's all right, okay.
Thanks.
How about, uh, Chief Detlaw, Fire Department?
You have our report for June. Um, thankfully, June was pretty normal, nothing major as far as that goes. We had an unfortunate start to July, um, with our first significant fire of the year. Um, we had, uh, four other departments help us with that and we actually had two firefighters that injured, so.
I heard-
It was pretty significant, so, yeah, so we, we had to evacuate, but we, we went through it and we got it done. Uh, all the reports are complete, so if, uh, they have any issues with the FOIAs, everything will be pushed out, so.
That went good. Are both of them, they're two?
Thankfully.
Yeah. Did you, now with this bike race, are you having more people on staff?
Two people that are gonna be on the whole time for the race from ten to two.
Will they just be at your part, at the-
Sponder race issues. So I'll have other people that are actually responding to other stuff.
On town and stuff, okay. That's great.
Surrounding county township fire departments be taking any part of this race and awareness and.
They know what's going on, but they're not specifically participating in it.
How's the fire truck going?
Actually, we've already had two people look at it, um, start go through that. So we're just waiting for the quote back and we're waiting for our third company to come take a look.
Thank you.
All right, city clerk. What do you want to do, do finance first?
Madam, may I just say something to the fire team?
Sure.
I would just like to say, cause I lived like four houses down and you all were amazing. And that you were out with other calls. Cause I hear the sirens and suddenly Cortland is in my yard, hooking onto the fire hydrant and. Brought in a bulldozer to finally drop it because it was such a hot fire. You poured so much water on it and you couldn't get it out. The floor has collapsed and you kept it from melting the person's house next door that's feet away. I mean, you all were just flipping rock stars. That's all I gotta say.
Get a little hectic when you first start up going through. So it's a little catastrophic.
I need you to know that you are amazing.
Not just us. We have a great group of departments around us. I mean, Sand Lake, Soul and Cortland, all Algoma, they all got here very quickly.
Within a couple of minutes. I mean, it was just crazy. And so that's what I'm saying. I just wanted to say. I mean, I have these people, I've done eight loads of their laundry in my steam washer that they've pulled out from rubber made totes that you all helped them get that day. So that some of the favorite stuffed animals and blankets of the kids, we've been able to rescue. Um, which by the way, if anyone ever needs to know how to do that, I can tell you. But, um, you just were amazing.
Make sure I forward it to everybody. We have it the first and third Tuesdays of each month. So next Tuesday will be our meeting.
Emptying the hoses onto my flowers. I said, I'll bring you all some donuts. Since we don't have it in the post anymore.
Meeting night, so, uh, we're probably not gonna be there.
Pizza parlor. Pizza to these firefighters. I think we as a city should send them something in gratitude.
Was it?
Uh, Hungry Howies. They did a very good job. Thank you. And I did go there personally and thanked them myself too. So. Thank you for reminding me, Jerry.
It was a hot fire. It was a devastating fire and you all just like every other building was saved. No, there was, I mean, there was a fourteen year old kid in the basement when it started. And you all are just amazing. That's all I gotta say.
So. Right. City Clerk Rebecca.
Busy month for me. Um, we are working on election at full speed ahead. So we have, um, completed our preliminary testing of all of our equipment. We have our public accuracy testing. That is, um, the public test where anyone is welcome to come in, watch us test the equipment. Um, to make sure that the boat's cast correctly and that the machine is working properly. That's gonna be Monday, July fifteenth at four P M. We have also been very busy with FOIAs recently. We've had three in the last four days. So, um, things just keep to. Here. So, yeah. Any questions?
Mrs. Landon?
A busy month for me as well and, uh, tax bills went out at the end of June. So I'm sure you've already received those in the mail by now. So. Things have been going pretty smoothly so far with the collection. There's been a few questions that have come up and a couple of extra phone calls. Um, but everything's been going pretty smoothly and this is my first time going through it on my own. Um, last year I started with the winter bills and Darla was able to walk me through that. So, yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad that everything is going smoothly and, um. Got all the bills out and I even did that when Darla was gone. So that was quite the accomplishment, I felt like. Um, also as Darla mentioned, we did close out that E D A project. That's another big thing that's been on my list. So been working on that closing for months. Um, so I'm happy to say it's finally been closed or approved and funded. So happy to have that done. And, um, we also have our, um, annual audit. That's gonna be coming up in the month of August. So that's targeted towards the week of, I believe, August nineteenth. Um, so I'm just busy checking things over and making any adjustments for the year end and, um, getting prepared for that, getting all the files rounded up and. Yeah, hopefully we'll be sitting good for that.
Do we have anything else from the other reports? Um, code enforcement, building inspection. With no additional department reports, we will move on to closed session. I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to section eight H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. To consider and discuss a written legal opinion from the city attorney at seven fifty six P M.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? Mr. Gross.
Yes.
I, I. Roll call vote, Mr. Mister Growth. Yeah. I'm asking, what would you like to vote? Yes. Mr. Max.
Yes.
Mr. Viral. Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yeah.
Miss Addis and both yes. What do you want? Five? You think we can get in there in five minutes? Okay, let's meet in five.
And a mayor will make a motion that we move back into open session.
At eight thirty six AM.
I'll support that.
I thought, I thought I had to do a second.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Marshall, the vote yes.
Seven zero. Yes. You're going on to council comments. Mrs. Conley.
Um, again, I just want to reiterate that our fire department are amazing people. And I was really impressed with how well the mutual aid agreement worked. How quickly it worked. That I'm hearing these sirens, I see them go around the corner, I go, by the time I get out to my front yard, Cortland Township is hooking on to the fire hydrant in my front yard. And I just am reminded about why that's a big deal. As my neighbor is telling me about calling her kid and trying to explain to him how he has to get out of the basement. And. Yeah, and like, that house is gone. I mean, it's, and they were, they were just there. And Cortland was there, and Stolam was there, and Algoma was there, and like, in, and it's just, and all of the equipment works together. There was no question that Cortland could hook on to our fire hydrant, that their hoses work, that everything, I just, I am reminded that we had this big discussion about the, um, people wanting the initiative to eliminate property taxes. And that's what we, and they did not get enough signatures.
Oh, good.
Um, we had the conversation at the last meeting, but a big piece of that is because that's the money we use to pay for fire departments. I mean, we used to pay for lots of things, but I, I really had it very clear in my brain that day. Is I'm watching people three doors down from me lose everything they own. Their kid is a friend of my kids. And I was like, just thank the powers that be that we have a fire department that we have, and that everybody else has the fire departments they have. And by the way, we really need to get rid of the, you can blow anything off you want, anywhere you want, even if it flies through the air and lands in other people's property. Like, it's just, it's horrific.
Doesn't help when we have a fire work star right there.
I mean, it's just, we had bottle rockets landing in our yard from the park. And right, and it, that should not be okay. That should not be okay to have things that explode and go on fire in a place that is this packed together that can land in someone else's property, and there's nothing we can do about it to create an ordinance because the legislature said you get to blow stuff off as long as you want. Cause we, they don't know, but pretty good guess. So that's just my, our fire department is amazing, and I'm really grateful that we, I had a front row seat. And I was super glad that I paid taxes to have them not have to be at my house. So that's, that's my, and hooray for Rebecca for all that she's doing to get ours ready for this election and putting it on camera, and that we have safe and fair elections. And that's amazing. So I, every department's amazing, but those two particular ones have risen to the top this month.
We'll build upon that with the fire department. I appreciate the fact, I was there, uh, they asked me some questions, the chief did. I says, I'm not here for that, I'm dropping off some water and some ice, because I knew they needed some cold drink, but he was still asking me. And I says, well, what do you think? And he's told me, and it was exactly what I would have told him. So, uh, I'd like to think that I had a little bit to do with that somewhere along the line. The continued training and the thing that goes on with that is a must. Uh, sometimes people wonder why the expense. That's the expense right there. There wasn't much of anything they could do for that home. It had such a start. The fact that they did what they did, and part of it has always been training to wet down the neighboring properties. So, uh, Rose has probably seen it when she's been around, when Chris was at one, so it's been that way right along. So it's passed along, it's a good training, but, uh, we do have a good fire department. My concern is though, as it has been right along with the number of people we have to respond to fires during the day. One of the reasons for the number of trucks was for the need for people. So you've got to call them in additional. We have the pumping power, we have the equipment, but you don't have the manpower. So most every truck is going to show up with at least two people. Someone would require three. So, and that's where it's at. So, uh, when I talked to Chief Fraser in the past about at least having three people during the day, he wasn't sure, I'm still sure that that's something we need during the day. Uh, somewhere or somehow, we're going to have to come up with it where we can have three people around during the day to respond. But, uh, I I have total faith in the city manager and what she's doing about this building. And, uh, I appreciate what she's done so far and what she's brought to us. And, uh, I think you're doing a great job. That's it. Oh, I'd like to welcome Michael to the board.
Yeah.
Now, you're already trying to spend money. So, uh, but unfortunately, that's part of our job, but we have to do it wisely, so. That's it.
Ms. Darrell.
Yeah. I'm, uh, super happy to be here, Ms. Powell. It's, big congratulations to you. It's an, it's an honor to work with you.
Thank you.
It's, yeah, you have a very kind heart, and I really, I really, really appreciate that about you, so. Yes. Yeah, I think, uh, just, I love the city and I love, love the direction we're going, so good stuff ahead.
Mrs. Powell, now that you're crying.
Well, part of my women's club duty is to, uh, work on the blood drive, and the sixteenth is a blood drive. I got a call, they're down to like two days' supply. Of course, they're, they're drawing all the time. So Tuesday, um, blood drive at the library. You can go onto their website and make an appointment. Website is easy, if you have to cancel, you can, it's just a great website, one of the best I've ever seen. Or walk-ins are welcome.
You can do it if you're seventeen, right?
I'm not sure. You, you could find out on the website, yeah, twelve thirty to seven, walk-ins are welcome. They would like you to actually have something to eat before you go in and, um, help save lives. Thank you, everybody, I see you Wednesday, hope it's not raining.
This is the race.
Um, uh, by saying thank you to Darrell, because I know that this is, you know, it's not quite your wheelhouse, so you're learning as you go along, and you're asking the right questions, and reaching to the right people, and into this. Um, I was excited to see the number come back like that, I'm like, yes. But again, we just have to follow the right steps to get where we need to go, and maybe hopefully he'll accept what we, like, offer, and we can move forward with that. Welcome, Mr. Maxon.
Thank you.
To have you on.
Thank you.
And, um, Rose, we'll have beers. So excited, so.
Maybe you'll be next.
Oh. That's it. Mr. Maxon.
I'd like to thank everybody for welcoming me, uh, to the council. Um, I, uh, uh, hope that in, uh, my time here I can, uh, contribute, uh, and, uh, be a, a very, very small part of, uh, some of the names that were mentioned during the meeting, uh, including Rose. Um, and congratulations, um, and I, I look forward to working, uh, with you all, and I look forward to working for the city.
Thank you. Comes down to me. Um, this council is wonderful, we're gonna miss Rose. Luckily, it's not till November, and she's still gonna be, still gonna be on the planning commission for us. Um, I'm glad we're gonna be able to do something for you. And I can't wait for the day, it's gonna be so fun. I told her, I said, I took the whole day off, and she goes, oh, boy, that must be special then. So, yes, very fun, and, um, just come join us, you know, it's gonna be a great time, you can see how we kind of work together. Um, the city staff again, it's just amazing. Um, I just don't, I don't know what else to say about you guys, you're just great. Um, you know, um, cover things that, you know, letting us know what's going on, you're already taking care of it, you know? That's great. Um, really nothing else, um, welcome again.
Thank you.
With that, I will call adjournment at eight forty seven.